Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Alt. Mr. Beistel. Mr. Carson.
Here.
Mr. Fry.
Here.
Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mr. Porter.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Love. Here.
Let it be noted that Mr. Alt did indicate that he would possibly either be late or he couldn't make it this evening.
Citizens comments?
I have none. Yes. It is my distinct pleasure this evening. Mrs. Gore and Mrs. Zianmarini have graciously offered to provide us a little inside view of the upcoming play. So it is with great pleasure that I'm turning things over to them. And I would ask the board if you would please move off to the cafeteria so that we can enjoy the show.
Hi, everybody. My name is Aaron Polakowski. I'm a senior and I'm the student director for this year's musical.
Hello. My name is Paul Schubach. I'm also student director for Little Mermaid.
Hi, I'm Reagan. I'm also student director for Little Mermaid. We also have two junior directors, Kelsey Galley and Paul Polakowski.
We've been working really hard on our review of our showpiece and we came with a free receipt. So without further ado, please welcome the coolest girl out there, Sister Sebastian.
Hello, everyone. How would you like to hear about a sexy little mermaid sister who has a beautiful voice and was very curious? When our story begins on your watch.
How can you win over a mermaid? And it's hazy to the starry day. You're scared of the wonderful things of good. Mysterious battles below. Battles below, below. From westward where westerly glow. We're trying to get king and his part. People singing mysterious battles below.
Isn't this perfectionism? Out here in the open sky, surrounded by nothing but water. Oh yes, simply, so wonderful.
And some girls can't look within your head and your face as they ever they go. But I'm the short against one. I don't care, that's me. I'm a monster.
A sinuous son of the king of the sea. And it's hazy to the starry day. The ruler of all of the oceans is he in mysterious battles below.
Soon our dear Ariel falls in love with Eric, thus strumming your piece. But her best friend Mama and her sisters aren't sure how they feel about that. Let's see.
Ariel is working by the last turn. Acting like a big fish in small water. Swimming upstream when everyone else is swimming down. Yeah, she's pretty. She's looking nice. No much about it. She's sure that I can fish in the sea. She's sexy, but she's not easy. Her eyes are long, fingers like a long pole. She goes away days, going on a cold ocean. She asks where she's going. She goes letting through. She carries sisters home. That I type of fool. It's nothing just a crazy. She said, she's just not herself. Is she ever gonna say? You're the one from free. Why does all the water stop? It's the land, it's the water. Is she gonna? Oh, wait, oh dear, good grief. It's me, she's in love. She's in love. Down in the heart, breaking down. She's not like the sea. We're in front of a shell. She's in love. She's here, she's in love. I'm on my way. I'm on my way. So we took him love. We thought, hey, you know, speaking weird. How do you know? Me, Ariel, I'll say. She doesn't see me. She doesn't even speak. She drinks less than she'd let overcome asleep. She's a late night, lost in the ocean. Then she shoots, shoots, shoots. She shoots at her. She shoots at her box. Shoots, shoots at her. She lays there like a loss. Shoots, shoots like a sword. Shoots at her head. She has lost her head. Ah, ah, even a sort of blow. And you can't remember to see that side. That's true. She's there, she never miss. Ah, beneath her scales. She's a woman. She wanted to the lucky secret dish. She's now the DC mom. Now she has the best song. Sing her friend. Tell me what she's been.
I'm unfortunate for us, you know, as well as a flat as your own. I never feel like that is true.
Oh, mistress, I repeat, you wizard.
I'm not so sure. Now, now, I wasn't getting confidence.
Don't be shy, Ariel, darling. It's me, your auntie Ursula. That's how you're doting everything.
I'm a lover, someone, a human.
Yes, this wizard, this quite catch. The answer is simple. You can't argue yourself.
Can you help me?
Help you? My, you're so child, that's what I live for. To help unfortunate people play the song. Those souls will never rest until they're done. I live in the past, I've been in the past. They were funny, funny, only for the passion. But you're putting down these. I've been blowing my brains out. I've been trying to find my friends. Three years. And I'm watching for you now. This magic, this tender, this happiness. They give you the blood. I root for them. So, no need to be afraid. A magic poor unfortunate soul. In pain, in need. This will long to now, I don't want to go. Do I help them? Yes, indeed. Those poor unfortunate souls. So sad, so true. But they can walk into my pocket. I fell to stop these and I got them. Yes, I do. There's a lot to choice. Some kind of grace. And a friend I have a break of laws of files. Yes, I have. A woman like me must sing. To the poor and modern as foes. He does like to stop me. I was thrown between the kingdom and three days. Now the procedure rules. So much quicker and more. Poor souls, poor spirits. You are the gift of a prince, yes, you. If you do, you'll stay in the world. And if I told that you're lost, darling, I'm sure. No, look, small crit. Your soul is my heaven. And you're trying to spend it to be my fortune because of player. Boys, don't you just want my? I'm almost there. But I don't have anything. I'm asking. My voice?
Ariel, don't do it. Child, what are you thinking? Listen to your father's advice. Just think about it.
But Teddy's never even mad at you. But he still thinks you're awesome. I just don't see how you're such a good thing. This stuff isn't impotent. What did you think? Life, and she's complete. What did you think of the girl? Ruffle hair. Heaven. Look at this trove, treasures untold. How many wonders can one have her holes? Will you around, you do? Sure. She's got everything. I've got gadgets and pistols plenty. I've got roses and roses no more. You want firearms? I've got plenty. But who cares? Nobody deal. I want her. I will be where the kill are. I will see, wanna see them dancing, walking around those. My own, oh, feet. And it's good, it's good on its heart. Lakes, green water, fruit chowmen. Dancing to the moon down the. What's that reading? Street. Are where they run. Are where they run. Are where they say, oh, bring the sun. Let me pray. Wish I could be, the top of the world.
She's here, child. Sebastian, she just doesn't understand that the human world is dangerous.
I know, Sire.
She needs her mother, Sebastian. And so do I.
If only she were there. She'd know just what to say. She heard we had yet yet we have the girls. Find her way. She'd know why to forbid. And what we must allow. She has strength and patience that are back somehow. Oh, what I would give to have her back by.
Nadia, is this a question? But she got her hat on. Not down for Ariel's sake. I'm telling you, what that girl needs is someone to watch over her. Some constant supervision to keep her out of trouble.
That's not a bad idea. Some of the state are her every good.
Her every dog.
Her every side stroke.
Her every die.
And you are just a crap to do it.
What? I don't know about that one, Sire. I mean, it's just a weird company. I keep on being some part of it.
Oh, oh.
Late one, so. How you know, let me show you. Jump. And you see. First I got. That's it. No, it's a whole. At least this potion to do it. It was something. Yeah. Oh, yeah. And I said. I could hope that I'd myself done Franklin. No. Here's something important, please, and tight. Try that. It's a classic. It's a party, it's like a sermon. Then you slash this, you this, you this. This is what you're gonna do, so do it. That's it, yes. It is. It's good.
You should. Give it to me. No, I never feel like that's very difficult. Always walking around too much. Oh, that's it, child. But some of the children have some good advice.
We've gotta have a notion. I can't get tired of you. Take it from the top, goodness. I'm gonna tell you. You need a space to turn on a beauty. I'm passing a case. And I swore, sorry, that I'm in a way against the rules. Oh, what can I get? Although perhaps it makes no sense. I tried to try to start a lot of my good. It's no one I can't. I'm the boss. There is one thing I've got. I've got a positive faith. I've got a positive faith. It gives me the faith that I can get my love. And why I'm a woman, you know, really want. And once you're hurt that hard, there ain't nothing you can't do. So let that positive faith work for you.
Well, who is he? Why is that not the word? Or there is, in a chair, for me. I'm not entering the miracle, believe me. As the miracle, I'm gonna have it. It's gonna happen. It's gonna happen. Something that you can do. Good dear, I'm gonna do it. It's gonna be great, I'm gonna be. It's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be. You sit, they take it, I'm gonna be. And then he just didn't there. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get you here. And that's the way you wanna be. But you're in the rock, you come on your. It's gonna be right on. And I just. I'm gonna get you. You're up to get. So, 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 so. But we got it, yeah.
We'd like to thank all of the crew and sixty-five members of the pit staff and all the cast. And we hope that we will see you all over at High School, March twenty-eighth, in the thirty-first for our production of Little Mermaid.
On behalf of the whole crew and our production staff, I'd like to thank you all for your time. And also, I would really like to thank you all for your support. The administration has supported and wonderful for us. And I really appreciate your time tonight and support and now thank you. Thank you.
We're gonna wait a minute or two.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, it's awesome. Wow.
They all signed up here?
No.
No? I think, yeah, I think we did. They're signed up. No, you don't. It's just president, superintendent, superintendent.
They did such a good job. Such, I mean, like, keep in mind that they're ninth and eleventh and twelfth graders. You know, I'm sure you have to. It's unbelievable. Okay, so just so you know, if I ever had to use those shoes with the wheels in them, like, it would not end well.
Oh, my gosh, that was fab.
That was.
The wheelie shoes. I would've went right off the edge of the deck.
Yeah, seriously.
Yeah.
Before we go on to the next item on our agenda, I want to once again thank Mrs. Gore and Mrs. Zianmarini and the cast and crew of Little Mermaid. I, if you were sitting there watching what was going on, it was a wonderful presentation. I am just so proud that, you know, we have such talented students that can step forth and do, do something of that caliber. So I encourage everyone to please, you know, on the twenty-eighth through the thirty-first, please join them. I know that I will be there with my granddaughter. So I'm really looking forward to seeing the show. So please, I encourage everyone to support them also.
Audit presentation. Mr. Mark Turnley, presentation on the audit of July first, two thousand seventeen through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Board members, thank you for having me here this evening. I've put in front of you a copy of the audit report for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, the thicker document, and a couple other pieces of audit correspondence that I'm gonna refer to during my presentation this evening. First, a couple notes with regard to the thicker audit report. In the very beginning of the audit report, on Roman numeral pages one through three is our independent auditor's opinion. And we have issued, what we have issued last year, what is known as an unmodified opinion. And basically, what that opinion means is that the information contained in the body of the audit report is in conformity with the rules and regulations of our profession. And there are no departures from that. So in layman's terms, as I like to say, that's a good thing. That's the type of opinion you want to have. I also always encourage my board members, in light of all the information you have to read, being a former board member myself, you're inundated with a lot of information. But in that thicker audit report, there's a section known as the management discussion analysis, which is on Roman numeral pages four through fourteen. If you get a chance, I encourage you to read that section. The purpose of that section is basically to provide the reader with a summary of the results for the year, financial results for the seventeen eighteen year, but also to present some comparative information, sixteen seventeen fiscal year alongside the seventeen eighteen information. And also some other facts and figures embedded in that report for the information of the reader. So again, I encourage you to read that section of the report. For the purposes of tonight's meeting, I presented a, or prepared a synopsis of certain financial highlights that are embedded in that report and also added some additional information so that the board can see some financial trends at the district over the last so many fiscal years. And one of the first pieces of correspondence that I gave you for this evening is a seven-piece document that one of the first bullet points starts with general fund balance analysis. What I did was show, over the last five fiscal years, the overall general fund fund balance at the district. And you can see, starting in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and going through the current year, which is at the bottom, seventeen eighteen, how the fund balance has changed. Most notably, in the current year, you can see the decrease of a little over $2 million, which is approximately forty-two percent. Now, that's the district's overall general fund balance. On the top of the second page, I've taken the portion of the fund balance, which is known as the unassigned portion. The unassigned portion represents that portion of the fund balance that can be used for general operating purposes and is not restricted or committed in any way by the board for any particular function project. And if you look at this five-year trend, you can see, over the last two years, again, a decline, most notably in the current year, significant decline in that general fund balance. The importance of this unassigned, which is why I break it out and show it separately to the members of the board, is, right now, that unassigned fund balance is approximately eight point six percent of your current year budget, the year that we're in right now. Back in two thousand three, there was an Act forty-eight that says, "In order to raise your millage to the level that the state allows, the state index, you must pass a budget whereby your unassigned fund balance, the number we're talking about now, is at or below a certain percentage of your budget." For Southmoreland, that magic percentage is eight percent. So you can see that your unassigned fund balance as a percentage of the budget is slightly over the eight percent threshold that the state caps you on. Now, your own internal policy subscribes to having a fund balance in the neighborhood of between five and eight percent. So you're, you're even slightly over your own fund balance policy. In the middle of page two, I just, in our industry, there's an organization known as the Government Finance Officers Association. And they do some studies on what is a, what is a good fund balance for all types of governmental entities. But in particular, for school districts, they came up with a calculation that prudently, an object, a goal would be to be around an average of two months' worth of expenditures for the district. So I did the calculation for Southmoreland for the seventeen eighteen year. And you could see that two months' worth of expenditures is about $5,258,000. Now, your current unassigned fund balance, as you can see, is about half of that number. The only trouble with the GFOA's recommended level is, as I mentioned before, the state wants to cap you at about eight percent. So if you ever did have the opportunity to go up to this higher level, you would be further in excess of that state cap that they, that they recommend that you stay at. On the top of page three, I just indicate by bullet point certain budget versus actual information. General fund actual expenditures exceeded budget by about $144,000 for the year. There's more detailed information in the body of the audit report I would turn your attention to when you get a chance, pages forty-six through fifty in the body of the audit report. On those particular pages, I've broken out in greater detail the budget versus actual results for the seventeen eighteen fiscal year, not only for revenues, but expenditures, on a greater level of detail by salaries, fringe benefits, items of that level. So again, I would turn your attention to those pages. General fund budgeted expenditures exceeded actual, so you didn't exceed your budget for the year by about $774,000. As a percentage of your overall budget, you're within 2.4 percent. Down below that, at the bottom, are the overall operating results of the district. When you look at the top line where I show net position, you're gonna see a significant deficit number. What, where this number comes from in the body of your thicker audit report is on page one. You're required to consolidate all of the financial activity of the district and present, not only on a short-term basis, what we've been talking about, the general fund balance, but add in all of the fixed assets and all of the long-term debt obligations of the school district. And about five years ago, a standard came out in our industry which required school districts to recognize their proportionate share of the Peasars liability for retirement at the state level. And for the Southmoreland School District, that number's about $45 million, $45.7 million. And with that factored in, that has driven your net position into a deficit position, as you see here that I present in this highlight page. And it's caused the same for all of my school districts. The important thing to note is that the underwriters for bond issues, when you go out for any capital funding that you may need, they understand that this is more of an accounting issue, more so than the fact that tomorrow morning we'd have to write a check to Peasars for $45.7 million. And it has not affected any interest rates in the borrowing community with regard, again, to capital funding. It's more of an accounting issue than anything else, but that's why that deficit net position stands as it is. Food service operations, a much smaller fund here at the district, but nevertheless, an important fund. I show you, the, the second line down shows the change in net position. That was your presentation. That was your profit or loss for the year. You can see, last year, a loss of approximately $66,000. This year, a loss of approximately $124,000. Without boring you with the accounting details behind that, embedded in the profit-loss statement of the food service fund are certain non-cash expenses that have to be recognized in order for your district's financial statements to be in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. Such items as depreciation expense on the equipment you've bought for the cafeteria to use, and also, as I just mentioned, the Gatsby 68, the pension requirements. That all has to be factored in for the cafeteria fund, as well as the general fund. And that impact is approximately $80,000 worth of expenses for the current year, which is part of that $124,000 loss. I just wanted the board to understand and know that. That's just not general operating expenses that's causing that decline in the food service operations. On the top of page four, I basically have recapped what I've just told you with regard to the Peasars liability, and also the operations of the food service fund. Following that, at the bottom of page four, through the end of page six, are my comments with, related to items that I found during the course of my audit. I encourage the board member to go through each of those at their earliest convenience, and see how they apply for potential changes in the district's operations. One that I wanted to mention to you in particular is at the top of page six on that synopsis, dealing with the fund balance. Just as we've been talking about, that I showed you on page one and page two of this synopsis, I just point out the fact that there's been a steady decline in the fund balance, the overall general fund balance. And the state has certain criteria that they look for when they're trying to determine whether a school district would qualify under the financial watch status as their fund balance declines. So, again, I'm bringing this to the board's attention. There's information at the PDE website with regard to the financial watch status system that PDE has implemented back in 2012. There are factors that come into play, various variables that they use to calculate whether you're going to face difficulties down the road if this level of fund balance continues to decline. You know, if you were to look at 1718-year decline alone, you would be running into cash flow problems by the time we got to the 1920-year if that level of deficit continued. So, again, I'm sure the board's aware of this, but it's my responsibility just to reiterate this fact and put it in my management letter to the members of the board. Lastly, because you receive and expend over $750,000 in federal funds on an annual basis, we not only do a financial audit, but we have to do a compliance audit. And in the back of the audit report, there's information related to the programs we tested this year for compliance sake. They were the National School Lunch Program and the IDEA funding that you receive from the intermediate unit. And it's one of the first pages that the state looks at when they receive a copy of your audit report. And they will see, on that particular page, which is the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs, that there were no material findings of noncompliance related to either of those programs. And again, that's a good thing. That's the type of report you want to have, especially the importance of that page when PDE opens it up, looking to see if there are any corrective action measures that need to be made. So, there's a lot of information in front of you, and some of it can be somewhat of a tough read, but I hope this synopsis pulls out some of the more important information embedded in the thicker audit report, and helps you understand what happened for the district, not only for 1718, but the trends over the last five years, with other comments of importance for the board to read at their leisure.
Mr. Turnley?
Any questions for Mr. Turnley?
Mr. Turnley has a question.
Yes.
I don't understand your, your audit.
Yes, sir.
What are other districts doing, especially in light of the pension, massive pension increase over the last eight years? It's up to 36 percent. Have they been addressing that issue for quite a long?
Well, they budget for it annually, as you do, and depending on where the school district is located, you know, I find, whether it's oddly enough or not, that my rural school districts tend to have a healthier fund balance than my inner-city school districts. Some of my inner-city school districts are at zero or slightly below, and they're in this financial watch status that I was talking about. And their problem is not only the pension, but the lot of money going out on cyber, school expenditures, special education, things of that nature. So, everybody's in, with regard to those issue, everybody's in the same boat. But their fund balances seem to be higher, a lot higher, as I'm seeing, than my, as I said, the rural school districts' fund balances are a lot higher than the inner cities. And it...
Well, the rural school districts, you're saying, have decent fund balances. Have they kept that away for the last five years? In other words, have they kept up with their expenses?
Well...
Is that what they've been doing?
My clientele, yes. And what they've done is exactly what they've done. I couldn't tell you. I mean, I would have to find from them.
Right.
But what they've, they've had enough fund balance, they've been able to assign a portion of their fund balance for those Peasars costs down the road. So, that that unassigned fund balance still remained within their parameters, just like yours is 5 to 8 percent. Don't get me wrong, everybody is suffering from the Peasars rate increase that has happened. And it's somewhat leveling off coming up over the next two years. It's still intending to increase up to 34, 35 percent, but, you know, back when I first started, we were down at 3 or 4 percent, and now we're up to 32.5 for this year, the year that I audited, and up to 33 this year. So, it's a tough economic factor that everybody's facing.
But even those districts who are setting aside assigned fund balance to cover their pension, aren't they eventually going to run into trouble because the pension's going to be a reoccurring cost, and the fund balance is going to run out? Eventually, they will hit a wall, correct?
That is correct. And what they, if they manage their fund balance, what some of them will do is keep that unassigned fund balance at or below that cap that I'm talking about, and continue to raise their millage up to that index level that it's allowed to cover any of those increased costs. And that's what they've been doing for a number of years. Now, I know the tax... They, not all of them, but they have been, some of them have been doing that in order to recoup those additional costs for retirement that there are...
Those districts are staying financially stable?
Yes, still.
All right.
Mr. Turnley, Dave Patonic, district solicitor. I believe we've spoken on the phone. Good evening. Following up on what Mr. Porter said, just to clarify that, it would seem that, on the one hand, school districts have to be perfect in that if they have any need or desire to raise taxes in order to maintain their financial strength, they can't do it if they fail the 8 percent test, if their fund balance, unreserved, uncommitted fund balance is 8 percent of their expenditures, correct?
That's correct.
And so, if we are at 8.6, then one possibility of a way to deal with that would be to move some of those monies from the unreserved, uncommitted, unassigned category to a assigned category, whether it's for Peasars or something like our early retirement incentive plans or construction project, for instance. Especially the early retirement incentive plans, because that, those are fixed obligations that we've incurred. And we could do that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, on the other end, you brought up the financial watch situation, and I actually want to go into the deeper category of the financial recovery.
If I may interrupt for one second before you get to that, I've been talking, a lot of my school districts, based on what you just said, have moved money into the assigned and committed categories in order to meet that 8 percent threshold. But we're hearing rumors that the state folks that come into audit you, not the local folks like me, but the state auditors that come in, that they're starting to look at the use of those assigned or committed fund balance, if they're actually being used for their intended purposes, or it was simply the district trying to get to that 8 percent level. And as I mentioned to you earlier about those rural school districts, they may move five, or have the luxury of moving four, $5 million into an assigned category or committed category for Peasars, or any type of incentives, healthcare benefits, capital projects, you name it. But the issue is, in some of those school districts, that number has been on the books for five, six years. And the state is going to, at some point, whether it's sooner or later, going to be looking at whether the district has truly utilized those funds as they have assigned or committed it. And I believe, and I know a number of my schools believe, that somehow, this is going to be linked to the amount of basic subsidy that the school districts is going to be entitled to. You know, the healthier, the more prudent you are with your fund balance, whether that's going to penalize you in the future, hopefully not, but if you don't use that assigned or committed money as you had planned, but have simply moved it to be within that 8 percent threshold, there may be ramifications. Has that come out in written form yet? No. It's just the talk that we're hearing in various conferences that we go to, something to just to be aware of. So, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I just wanted to point that out.
That's very helpful. I'm glad you mentioned that, but I don't know that we have four to $5 million to move around, so that's number one. But number two, in the past, going back several years, the district did have a practice of actually setting aside money to cover early retirement incentive plans into the assigned category, and then actually use them that way. And I think a few years ago, we sort of fell away from that. And I'm just pointing out that, you know, trying to inquire if that would be another possibility of what would appear to be a legitimate thing to do, because it is an ongoing obligation, and I don't think we're talking about four to $5 million, and I really, truly believe it would be used for that purpose.
And it can. You actually have, at least in this audit, you had $42,000 left in those obligations in that assigned category, so you're correct.
Yeah, okay. Different matter. Now, in, under the regular portion of the school code, when you look at the budget process, they look at the use of the word deficit, and it's basically, at the end of the year or, when you do a budget, your expenditures have to equal your revenues, and you're allowed to utilize fund balance in order to, quote, "balance" the budget. But whereas under the, and you would agree with that, correct?
Yes, yes.
And, but whereas under the financial recovery statute and regulations, they appear to have a different definition for the word deficit. And as I understand it, and I believe we talked about this, but, you know, please indicate whether or not this is accurate, if a school district takes money from its unassigned, unreserved fund balance, the free portion of it, and utilizes that to balance the budget, even though that complies with the rest of the school code, for the purposes of those regulations, it's still considered a, quote, "deficit," close quote. Correct?
That is correct. So, it's somewhat of a conundrum, because...
Exactly my point.
Right.
Yes, thank you.
Exactly.
But I want to follow up on that for another point, because I'm trying to lay out the boundary lines of the school district's obligations and make it understandable. If we have a situation, we've already had two years of decrease in the unassigned fund balance, which you pointed out, 1617 and 1718, were true deficits under the definition utilized by the financial recovery statute, correct?
That's correct.
So, for the coming, upcoming budget year, well, actually, 1819, we're in it now. And I can't, I don't have perfect recall on this, but I believe that there was a use of monies from the fund balance, the unassigned portion, in order to meet ongoing expenditures. And if that were the case, then we would have three years in a row, and sometime next year, you'd be telling us that we had three years. But I believe that if we were to look at the budget from last year, we would see that that already is in the works, that it's already baked in. And I guess my question is, if we were to do that again for the 2019, 2020 budget, that would be four years of deficit spending. But just to clarify, we may already be in that situation now. And under one of the regulations, which I think I may have mentioned, 22PA Code 18.52, if there are three years of decline in the unreserved fund balance, and the unreserved fund balance is less than 5 percent of the district's annual expenditures, then that is one of the criteria, not merely for financial watch, but for financial recovery. And I believe I pointed that out to you in the past. Do you agree with that?
Yes, that's correct.
So, on the one hand, it looks like we have a little bit too much money in the fund balance. But on the other hand, realistically, we are already meeting part of the criteria, or about to meet part of the criteria, of having three years in a row of unreserved fund balance declining and being actual deficit spending. Correct?
If that decline is at the same level as it was in the 1718 year, you'd also meet that, you'd be below that 5 percent of your budget, which would be in the neighborhood of about $1,700,000.
Right.
Your general, your unassigned, if it continued as it did in 1718, you'd be below that criteria as well.
Okay. I appreciate your time, and I may have a need to make further inquiry with you in the future, if I may.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Is it fair to say, when you look at the district at one point, June 30th of 2018 we're talking about, you just looked at the overall finances without looking at the previous history that you presented, okay? You could honestly say the district's in fairly good shape. But the problem is, you look at the history, you see where you come from, and as you demonstrated, we're in a downward spiral. And that's the red flag.
You know, I mentioned, almost on a positive note, that, actually, on a positive note, that you didn't spend your budget. You were under budget by $744,000. But just hearing me say that masks the real problem, that your overall fund balance, your actual expenditures. You know, you need to be within reasonable, reasonably close to what your budget is. That's obviously the objective every year, but what really matters is actual to actual. And you can see, for the current year, we dropped by $2 million. That's really the truth of the story. And if that were to, and that's, now we're talking cash, and by that, I mean, where that comes into play is cash flow. And I've seen this play out on a couple of my districts, unfortunately, where, you know, we get to December and January of that year, in your case, let's say that happens, and we hope it doesn't happen, it's the 1920 year. You're looking to borrow money, to somehow to have money to make payroll. And that's what happens. And I've seen it happen in three instances, just like clockwork, it happens, just because of the way the expenditures are exceeding revenues over a period of time. And you have time to change it, it's just a matter of what the board decides to do. But the trend is, correctly, that you are headed downward. And significantly this year, as a percentage of last year's to this year, 42 percent. That's a significant drop. And, you know, without belaboring the point, two more years of that, and, or one more year of that, plus a little bit into the next year, there's going to be, there's going to be problems in particular.
If the budget was on, the case scenario would be even worse.
Well, even if you're using, to Dave's point, if you're using your fund balance to balance your budget, even if you're balanced to your expenditures budget right on, you're still using the fund balance...
Right.
...to live. So, that naturally is going to cause that fund balance to go down. So, it's a good job that you're doing with regard to... So, it's a good job that you're doing with regard to keeping in line with your budget, but, you know, that's not the issue. You need to, you need, obviously, I don't have to tell the board this, you need to look for areas to cut or to manage better, so that you don't run into that issue, so you're not using your fund balance anymore. I mean, this is things that you know already, but I'm just reiterating that point.
People get confused over fund balances, it's an accounting term, but they understand cash. And three years ago, our cash balances of June thirtieth was around nine million bucks. Today, it's around four and a half. So, that gets the picture across. It's dropped by four and a half million dollars.
Well, to that point, and I apologize, I don't mean to belabor the point, but when I look at the, for the general fund as of June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, there was approximately four point four million in cash and investments, but that was offset, you know, by liabilities of three point six million, that are true liabilities that call to be paid in cash. Three point three of that, again, not to bore you with numbers, it was accrued salaries and wages, that were already paid. So, cash is very important, you're correct, but just when you look at that and compare the liabilities...
Right.
You know, that theirs were your true, true numbers, the net of that, the net cash, if you will, after you take those factors into consideration. But the fact that you dropped from nine to four is a red flag.
Right. Exactly what you said, at June thirtieth, for school districts, the liabilities are always much greater than whatever receivables you have, just based on July and August payroll for teachers.
Absolutely. Always the case.
And all the benefits that go with it.
Yes.
The receivables for a district is at June thirtieth, what the state owes you is very little, locally is very little. So, that's a very good point. Yes, we dropped four and a half million in cash, but the liability reduces that cash even further. Thank you. Very excellent report.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Jeffrey?
Thank you, Mr. Turnley.
Thank you very much.
Approval of minutes?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the minutes for the February fourteenth and February twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen board meetings.
Accounts, fund accounting check summary?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the February two thousand and nineteen fund accounting check summary. I don't think we have treasurer's reports, though.
Will there be a treasurer's report with Marnell?
Oh, there will be, yes. I'm still waiting for some outstanding bank statements to come in.
What month?
I can't do a treasurer's report without all the bank statements.
Will that be the February, which one will that be, Mr. Marnell?
That'll be for the month end of February.
February?
Two thousand and nineteen February treasurer's report.
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the February two thousand and nineteen general fund budget status.
February two thousand and nineteen general fund budget status?
Oh, I'm sorry, I read the wrong one.
No, we did treasurer's report. Budget transfer request for special education.
The board will be asked to consider the approval of a budget transfer request for special education services.
Budget transfer request for athletic department?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of a budget transfer request for athletic department coaching positions for the middle school track.
Board reports will be given at the voting meeting. Superintendent information?
I will present that next week.
Solicitor information?
The only thing is that I've been in communication with the abstract company, and they're very close to getting me the final paperwork I need. I was on the phone with them again today, and so it's moving forward slower than I wanted, but it's still moving forward. So, I'm looking for some developments next week and hope to report to you at that meeting.
Before you get to the next one, I mean, Mr. Paton, I'm going to the resolution to meet that.
Oh, well, no, you're not passing it tonight. I can give a summary.
Yeah, could you please?
Taking seriously the board's previous desire to have all options presented, I went through the exercise of preparing what a resolution would look like if you were to continue to move forward to doing a back-end referendum in order to get voter approval to raise enough millage to balance the budget, but exceed the Act One index and even exceed the extra approximately hundred and fifty-some thousand dollars of special ed exceptions, which you were granted. Mr. Marnell had received an email, and I mean, it's still here thunder, but that you were granted that exception. The problem is that we would still need to fill in those blank spaces under choice number one to figure out the millages. And there's some additional difficulties with this, because we're a two-county school district. This is a real headache to work with. Were you to make additional cuts next week and vote to say that you wanted to do something that was going to produce cuts, that would require some additional calculations as to whether, and present the legal issue of whether you seek the referendum based on the preliminary budget that was passed in January, I'm sorry, on February fourteenth, or with the additional things that you have locked in. You've locked in one so far, which is the savings from the ARIT. And then, choice number two, at the bottom of the page is, and for some reason, the printing is kind of awkward here, it got repeated, is the board does not approve pursuing a referendum for the two thousand and nineteen May election, and understands that the final budget must not contain a tax increase greater than the index of three point one percent adjusted for each county's millage. That part's important because of the different changes in market value for each county. It can slightly change making one county be able to have to be underneath that number, plus an increase for a granted special exception increase. So, if you decide that you don't want to pursue the referendum, and I've sort of assumed, I guess maybe mentally, that that's what you're going to decide, for the sake of my own thought processes, but it's still on paper here that you could pursue it, then you still have the right, because you did the preliminary budget, to both go to the three point one percent limit and enough of an additional amount of millage, which Mr. Marnell would have to calculate, to cover the increased costs of the special education exception, which have been granted. So, those are the stark choices there. Under either of those scenarios, you can and should continue to reduce your expenditures, because regardless of which path you go, you still have to go through the regular school district budget process of the proposed final budget in May, and you have a date set for that, and then the final budget at the end of June. Questions?
Hey, Jim, what's our exceptions worth now for special ed and Peasers?
We did not qualify for Peasers, but for special ed...
At all?
Hundred and fifty-four thousand.
Hundred and fifty-four thousand for special ed, didn't qualify for Peasers. That's because it's leveled off.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Paton.
Old business rep still building?
I just did that.
New business, referendum tax rate increase in excess of index?
He just did that.
He just did that.
Two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty W.I.U. general operating budget.
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty Westmoreland Intermediate General Operating Budget.
Award multipurpose paper bid?
Excuse me, anything's on the, on the W.I.U. general operating budget? I went through all the documents, and maybe I missed it, but, you know, it gave, it was a macro report. I didn't see the individual school districts. Was that in there, or did I miss it?
Share?
Share the...
I thought it was in there, but I...
It's on page five.
Yeah.
Oh. How much is it, Jim? It was always around twelve thousand. What is it now?
Next year, they have it projected at five thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars.
So, they reduce services, that much on? Wow. Thank you.
Award multipurpose paper bid?
Coming up. The board will be asked to consider the approval of the awarded bid for multipurpose paper to W.B. Mason Company Incorporated, recommended the lowest responsible bidder in accordance with Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Joint Purchasing Consortium for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year.
Policy two forty-six, school wellness?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of revisions to policy two forty-six, school wellness. This policy has been posted for thirty days.
Athletic department permission to advertise for bid supplies?
The board will be asked to consider authorizing permission for the athletic department to advertise for bid supplies for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year. The notice will be published March twenty-second, March twenty-ninth, and April fifth, two thousand and nineteen, in the approved school district newspapers. The bids will be open on Friday, April twelfth, two thousand and nineteen.
Chemco OTPT renewal contract?
How about Echols?
Oh, Echols proposal, sorry.
The board is asked to consider the approval of a proposal from Echols Architecture and Engineering for services to upgrade access control at the high school, middle school, and elementary school. And this is tied into the grant money that we're getting from PCCD to upgrade our security system, interior doors and exterior doors, and camera systems, I do believe.
Vince, have they done this before? Remember, I was talking on the board about it, maybe four, five years ago, before the feasibility study?
I do believe that they did, but I think since then, that things have changed because of the accessing, a lot more is computer-controlled.
They couldn't piggyback on that last report?
I don't think it would have been. I do believe that we're trying to go as much as possible to state-approved bidding, so I think we needed to get some truer numbers.
Okay.
Chemco OTPT renewal contract?
The board will be asked to consider the renewal of the contract for two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year for physical and occupational services for students with special needs at a rate of sixty-six dollars per hour for occupation and physical therapy provided. And that is up one dollar. It was, last year, this year was sixty-five, so it's only gone up one dollar.
No. Student assistance program, two thousand...
Before you go on, just as a point of information, if I may, President, you said sixty-six dollars per hour. I sent you an email right before I left the office tonight, because I noticed, and you'll see it in the email. They don't tell us what, what the, whether it's sixty-six dollars per event, or sixty-six, which I hope it is, or sixty-six dollars per hour. They left out "per hour," so they need to redo that page.
Okay, I will make sure of that.
Maybe you could talk them into "per event," but...
Don't we win? Thank you, Mr. Paton.
Student assistance program, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of an agreement for student assistant program, which is our SAP program with Westmoreland County Behavioral Health and Developmental Service Program, and Westmoreland Drug and Alcohol Commission, and Southmoreland School District for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year, July first, two thousand and nineteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty.
Allstate Festival and Honors Symposium?
Well, I'd like to congratulate Dylan. The board will be asked to consider the approval of Dylan Opelinski to perform at the Allstate Festival, April third through the sixth, two thousand and nineteen, in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Also, one of the students that participated in the PMEA region band in Newcastle has the potential to perform in the Future Music Educators Honor Symposium. These two events run congruently. All expenses, except for travel to the audition site location, Norman High School, are included in the student registration fee. And once again, I do want to recognize Dylan. This is a great achievement and an honor, Dylan, so thank you very much for representing our district and...
Thank you. TFIM Annual Conference?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of approximately fifteen students, Mr. Ansel, and a female chaperone to attend a two-day, one-night for the TMI, TFIM, The Future Is Mine Spring Conference at Pittsburgh Marriott Hotel, April eleventh through the twelfth. Conference cost is covered by the chapter, chapter annual dues. Only cost to the district would be transportation for the students and chaperones.
Two thousand and nineteen list of potential graduates?
The board will be asked to consider the list of the two thousand and nineteen potential graduates.
Resolution, Student Discipline Matter, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, number one oh one.
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the Resolution Regarding Student Discipline Matter, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, number one oh one.
Student Discipline Matter, number one oh two.
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the Resolution Regarding Student Discipline Matter, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, number one oh two.
Student Discipline Matter, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, number one oh three.
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the Resolution Regarding Student Discipline Matter, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, number one oh one.
Student Discipline Matter, number one oh two.
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the Resolution Regarding Student Discipline Matter, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, number one oh two.
Student Discipline Matter, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, number one oh three.
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the Resolution Regarding Student Discipline Matter, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, number one oh three.
High school musical staff?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the High School Musical Staff supplementals listed on board docs?
Volunteer coaches?
The board will be asked to consider approving the list of volunteer coaches found in board docs?
Concession stand?
The board will be asked to consider posting for outside vendors bid, the food service contract at the Southmoreland High School Fieldhouse for all football and soccer games for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year.
Homecoming sponsor resignation?
The board will be asked to consider the resignation of Jean Carey as homecoming sponsor and authorize administration to post the position.
Resignation of paraprofessional?
The board will be asked to consider the acceptance with regrets of Tammy Buttermore as a paraprofessional as of March twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen.
Retirement of food service employee?
The board will be asked to accept the retirement of Ruby Cordell, food service employee, effective June sixth, two thousand and nineteen.
Day-to-day substitute?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the following day-to-day substitutes: Cassandra Thomas as a day-to-day school nurse substitute, all clearances are current and on file with the administration, and Christina Betlin as a day-to-day substitute for secretarial aide cafeteria, all clearances are current and on file with the administration.
Citizens comments?
I'd like to know what the chain revisions were in the wellness policy, who made them, and how I can find that. I went online today and couldn't see those, and thought I'd catch it in a discussion here tonight, and I won't have time to comment after this, before you vote on it next week. On financial things, you know, it's really not my, in my wheelhouse to talk to financial, but sometimes the, you know, the citizens' view of this conversation is valuable. A question I've been asking around for six or eight months is, with the retirement fund, is that a guaranteed fund? In other words, is that fund going to stand... In other words, is that fund going to stand if we have a stock market crash of oh-eight or maybe double that or even more of that? Or is that going to go down with, like, my personal retirement account? Because when you go into your negotiations with your teachers, as you have in all these other years, we're talking apples and oranges. If it is a guaranteed government retirement fund, that's worth a hell of a lot more than having that money in a fund like I have. So if I can't figure that answer out in three or four months, maybe it's real simple, maybe I haven't asked the right people, but I know a lot of other people have that same confusion. And relatedly, you know, the people that I listen to on financial things and trends and political things, you know, foresee that we're in a cycle where we're going to have a crash like oh-eight, and I haven't heard that scenario worked up with all the experts at this, on this stage. I think that you owe it to the citizens to say, okay, we have thought, what's going to happen if we have an oh-eight plus two or three crash? We've had that conversation. Here's who's going to suffer. Are these teachers going to survive with their retirement account or not? I think that is absent here because it's not a wild idea that it's going to happen in capitalism. You have periodic crashes and the things are saying that we're on that. Again, that's not, that's not a strong thing for me as the economics. I think I have one more note here. And I assume on the tax rate then, from, again, from the layman's point of view, that we're going to go to the maximum, and now we have a little fudge room with a little bit more. And it's not going to be on a referendum, but then again, next week, you could vote to put it on a referendum, maybe. I don't know. I'm still in light, in the dark here because when we come here for a discussion meeting, there's no discussion. Or at least there's not a discussion that I can take back as a layman on that. And then finally, then, on the, at the end, and I'll address the board president directly on this, at the end of the, on the end of the agenda, I learned my alphabet and numbers in kindergarten. If, if like last week, you go and you take the citizen's comment and you open the floor and then all hell breaks loose, and you know, you made a nice comment at the end, but then I didn't have the opportunity to come up here and comment on that, and that's supposed to come A, B, C, one, two, three. Can we do that for a change? Or maybe I'm wrong, Dave. Maybe, maybe parliamentally, the parliamentary procedure is that, once I'm done talking, if you're not talking about something related, you can go anywhere you want. And I could stand corrected on that, but I've raised it several times and I'm still-
Who were you looking at just now? You looked in that direction. I don't know to whom you were looking.
I'm-
You looked in that direction and said, you spoke-
Yeah, the student.
Okay. I wasn't sure that whom you were looking at.
I'm sorry, I'm addressing the president. Okay, thanks, guys.
That's an interesting question. I'll have to think about it because Dylan's a student representative, and he sits here with the board, but he's not literally a board member. I'm not exactly sure of what his status would be. I'll have to give that some thought. That's an interesting question.
And I think you would agree, it's not him, it's usually everyone else. And I would say that he should have to come down here and stand in line if he's out, if you're not going to suspend the rules and, you know, you suspend the rules and you can go wherever you want on the agenda. And he always has, you always, anyone has the option on the board to come down here and stand in line like I do. Thanks.
Jan, answer to your question on PESs, it's guaranteed.
So the government, the government, okay, so that's it. Thank you.
Two thousand eight is why, is one reason why we're paying, we'll be paying up to thirty-eight percent of gross salary into the pension fund.
Okay, so we have the big crash that I'm predicting, my retirement goes.
It compounds the situation.
Pardon me?
It compounds the situation.
It makes it doubly worse.
It compounds the liability for the pension system.
So the taxpayer would-
It all depends on how much money's invested in the stock market. I know when I was here, it was averaged somewhere around sixty percent of their funds were invested in the stock market. Whether they still invest at that rate, I don't know. I haven't followed it.
Okay, well then, I'll just finish my point then. When you negotiate your contract with them, you have to really make sure the public understands that everyone else could go broke and the government people would be regenerating them. And, yeah, so that's a pretty good situation. And, man, I'm glad I got the answer. Thanks.
He had this book in front of him, page forty-seven, has a nice little chart on the change in PESs retirement percentage contribution. And they start their chart with the oh-eight, oh-nine school year, where the combined rate was. You've got to know that it's the combined rate, not the school district's rate. The state pays half. So when you see it started out at four point seven percent, we had, our net share was, you know, two point three-five-something percent. So next year's thirty-four point two-nine, our net cost is seventeen percent, seventeen point one-five. But you can see the financial crisis started in oh-seven, oh-eight, and the retirement board has been trying to play catch-up. And unfortunately, or unfortunately, the state legislature has had to concede that they were wrong and governors were wrong in a past by artificially lowering the retirement contribution rate from its last peak of about nineteen point eight-something percent in nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine, to almost one percent. And I forget what year it was. You'd have to, I'd have to get that chart going back, so had they kept these level-funded state and local share, we wouldn't be in this boat. But this has been, this has been a political problem for many decades, going back to the sixties. In fact, several years ago, I pulled out an old newspaper article, a letter, not a letter, an article in the opinion page of the old Greensburg Tribune Review, somewhere around nineteen seventy-four-ish, where they talked about the retirement system for school districts. They always blame the poor schoolteachers, but it's not schoolteachers and schoolboys. It's the government and the governors who played games with the contribution percentage. Okay, when the stock market was going full-blown back in the nineties, the roaring nineties, and the unrealized investment gains were exploding in the retirement pot, well, they saw that as a, as a way to reduce the state budget, and of course, we benefited from that too. So they lowered the cost each and every year. And we knew, as we talked about it as our old business management meetings, we knew that any time we throw that ball down, it's going to bounce up higher than where it started. And that's what's happened. So we're all paying the cost of political miscalculations and chicanery in Harrisburg that has caused this problem. But there's some good charts in there. Another problem that has been eating away at our, at our district and all districts, and I've seen this personally in two districts that I've worked in, Leggitt Valley and down at Steel Valley, is charter school expenditures. There's a chart on page forty-eight as it's climbed, and I have a little chart I'm preparing in the office to show you what has happened to us individually as it has climbed. Now, there used to be a little subsidy from the legislature on our charter school expenses. It was usually ten percent of what you expended, you got back the following year. And if you were in an extraordinary high situation, you could get up to thirty percent back. But Governor Corbett's very first budget for the ten-eleven school year, he proposed, and the legislature accepted, eliminating that subsidy. So no longer were we getting any subsidy from the state legislature. That was another way they saved their budget. And that's another way they saved themselves from having to raise taxes in Harrisburg, which would consequently cost them from getting re-elected to their legislative or senatorial positions. So charter school expenditures have been a real big bugaboo. So, you know, you've got the mismanagement in Harrisburg of the retirement fund, and of course, you've got, when they passed in nineteen ninety-seven the Charter School Act, that created another whammy that we've had to live with and fund. So when you talk about why you have to raise taxes locally, those are two big reasons. And it's not anything that we've done here or we have done in the past. It's because of what they have not done right in Harrisburg. Now you've got me fired up. And here's another thing, on page fifty, our auditor has alluded to fund balances. Okay? Well, here's a, here's a chart on fund balances. All right. It starts with ten-eleven and ends with the sixteen-seventeen because they have to draw their information from the data bank at PDE. So PDE has not yet loaded completely all the seventeen, eighteen annual financial report information that we completed last fall. But anyway, sixteen-seventeen. And they have the chart broken out between all districts, rural, urban, and of course, suburban. Now, Mark was right on a point when he said, my rural districts have been in better shape than my urban districts. So if you look at that, that top line, it shows the rural districts' average unassigned fund balance ending with sixteen-seventeen, it was nine point three percent. Now, of course, you've got this so-called state cap of eight percent. Malartic. I don't worry about that. As far as I'm concerned, that's none of their damn business, how much fund balance we have. But you know why they make it their business? Because that's another way, like Mark alluded to, they're going to end up punishing districts that have tried to save money by saying, well, look, school districts have this so-called rainy day surplus fund, and we're going to deduct so much from future subsidies because of these fund balance amounts. Now, we've not been extraordinary in our fund balance amounts, but you know, you can play that, that shell game, like Mark alluded to, by doing a journal entry from your unassigned fund balance to your assigned or committed. In other words, to take it away from unreserved so that it doesn't go over that eight percent. But they're going to look at it as a whole eventually. But you look at this chart, you see he was right, rural districts are better. Why is that? Well, I think it's because maybe the communities in rural areas are perhaps a little more responsible, close-knit, and more frugal. Now, urban districts have different problems altogether. And I only worked for a short time in one urban district, but you look at the money they have, and I can tell you, down at Steel Valley, they were getting killed with charter school expenditures because down there, they had several in that area, Allegheny County, of brick and mortar, like Propel was a big one, that was really eating their breakfast, lunch, and most of their dinner. It was over three million dollars a year for that district. Phenomenal. So anyway.
So what are you trying to save?
You know, it's like, it's like the conundrum that you mentioned. You could get punished for saving money and putting money away. And that's wrong because that's the attitude of Harrisburg when they passed that act, wanting you to be capped at eight percent of unreserved fund balance. But now they've caught wind of all these districts that have moved money to these other categories. Now, it's a legal movement, perfectly legal to do, to move money to assigned or to committed, but they're now going to look at that because, like you said, are you doing with that money what you intended to do? Now, we've not played that game. Years ago, you guys went and committed a chunk of money for an E-RIP program that was passed some years ago, and we have moved money out of that committed by journal entry to the unassigned. And we had a higher assigned fund balance, but we have utilized that for certain projects. Remember, the Guaranteed Energy Savings Project, of which was one million, three hundred thirty-one thousand dollars? That was not funded out of operating monies, but came out of assigned fund balance. That's why the assigned category went down. Now, what's left in there is a little over two hundred thousand. I told Mark that my assignment of that money, and you can change it, you have the power to change it, was for potential tax refunds due to any coming tax appeal cases. I don't know what we'll, we'll get hit with. Dave and I have been working on this together for years, trying to come up with maybe some sort of projected calculation, but you never know. So, you know, two hundred and seven thousand dollars of assigned monies for that. The rest is unassigned, unallocated.
I don't care what you label, assigned, unassigned, unreserved, it's fund balance.
Absolutely.
Bottom line, it's fund balance.
I've said that for years. And you know what? Years ago, that's what it was called, and then they started playing games with, well, we're going to have unreserved and unassigned and all these other stupid categories, when the bottom line is, it's just like in accounting class. Assets minus liabilities equals owner's equity. In the corporate world, you know, it's net profit, retained earnings.
So fund balance is fund balance. The key-
That's right.
-issue for me is, and what the state should push through, that school districts cannot fund their balance with fund balance. That makes you honest. That makes you, that forces every district to come up with reoccurring revenues to match up with recurring expenses.
Absolutely.
Period. There's no debate, there's no debate anymore.
We're looking to balance, a true balanced budget with revenues matching expenses and hoping to try to save what's left of that unassigned fund balance because, you know, it's not even equal to one month's of expenditures. If you look at it that way, you take your thirty-some-million-dollar budget, you divide it by twelve months, that number is greater than your unassigned fund balance. You don't have one month of operating capital. Now, will that ever happen? You don't know. But you know what? You at least need some sort of emergency reserve, something. We're not in the shape we were in, what happened to us in two thousand fifteen, when those idiots in Harrisburg couldn't come together and play well in their sandbox, and they couldn't pass a budget, and they played games, just like the federal government does. Well, we're just not going to have a budget, and so all the federal employees, a lot of them, don't get paychecks, and then they get in trouble. Come on. That kind of stuff has got to stop. Same thing in Harrisburg. Pass a budget. Enough said.
Any more citizens' comments?
I'm sorry, I didn't ask to go down there and stand in line like Jan.
Thanks, Jan.
Did the board get their balance from the IU?
Oh, yeah.
We need, we need those.
You need to sign off on it, right?
Yeah. I mean, I have a copy for-
We got till the end of the month. We got till the end of the month.
Yeah, I would definitely need them.
I'll bring it in next week, all right?
Yeah, I need those next week.
Does anybody need one?
No, I have it.
Okay.
I have it on the table.
Motion to adjourn. Did she get that? Mrs. Smith, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yoy.
Meeting is adjourned.